Like to call the February twentieth meeting of Gloucester County Board of Supervisors to order. Mr. Steel, will you call the roll?
Mr. Gibson?
Here.
Dr. Orth?
I am here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Crisco?
Here.
Mr. Bizani?
Here.
Mr. Nikosia?
Here.
All present.
All right, would you all join me in, um, stand for invocation and pledge allegiance? Let's start. Would you like to go, Dr. Orth?
No.
Would you, uh, would you, uh, all join me in a moment of silence for all first responders that have met? A bunch of terrible fates recently. Heavenly Father, as we join here tonight as citizens of the county and board supervisor members and county employees, let us be mindful that there are numerous objectives, but only one goal, and that is to make Gloucester County the best county that we can. Father, use your guidance to lead us, direct us in things that are best for the county and for you. For it's in your name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from September twenty-sixth and October third.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, next item is adoption of the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Our next item is approval of the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is matters presented by the board. Dr. Orth.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. Um, uh, at one of our earlier meetings, I told you all that I've taken a keen interest in, uh, the flooding of some of our low line roads. Uh, so I've been watching very carefully the tides that we've been having, uh, that go above a level of, I say, three point two, because at that level, we see flooding in some of the roads. Last week, we had some exceptionally high tides. They were running about a foot and a half above that three point two, meaning that some of these low line roads have had at least over a foot of water in places down in Guinea, salt water. It concerns me a lot. Now, I met with, uh, a constituent of Mr. Bizani last week when the tide got low enough that I get into the roads. And we talked about it, and, um, I talked with Mr. Bizani this afternoon about, you know, how do we resolve this issue? Because we can't stop the water from coming in, but I think we can do something to make the water flow out a lot easier. Um, he did tell me of the work that was done years before. I think, uh, the game plan has changed a little bit because, um, I showed you some of the data that I've been watching, uh, exploring, showing that the number of tides above these three point two meters or three point two feet has been increasing, meaning that these roads are getting flooded more frequently. Um, and for people in Guinea, some of those roads are the only avenue out. Um, so I'd like to continue pursuing this, uh, and maybe have a meeting with Mr. Knight, McKnight, and, um, see what we can do. I don't want to drop the ball because I think we need to recognize that, uh, we are going to have more tides above this certain level. And of course, with the hurricane season coming, uh, we really need to be cognizant of the fact that these people, if they don't get out early enough, they're stuck with over several feet of water. The other thing I mentioned is Mr. Bizani, when I was there, uh, with Mr. Vogt, I saw a school bus come in and had to turn around and got into about four or five inches of salt water. I can't imagine that that salt water is good for the brakes of the bus. And that was when the tide had been really out, but there was still quite a bit of standing water, meaning the water is not going out. So I just want to make you aware of this. Um, I'll continue to pursue it. I want to maybe work with Mr. Steel about, you know, how I can get the VDOT to, you know, take charge of this. I know it were, you know, it may, might be tough giving VDOT and what they can or cannot do. But, you know, it's possible that we could write for grants to make some of these areas maybe a few extra inches. I know, I know. I'm, 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 yeah. I'm just trying to do something because there are like some roads where, where the moton center is, anytime it goes above three point two feet, that road gets covered. And if somebody's coming to the moton center and they're coming from the wrong direction, they're going to see the standing water. Uh, so there may, we may need to have a plan. I mean, this may take a while, it may not be an overnight thing, but I just want to make the board aware. It's something that really concerns me and it's going to get worse before it gets better.
Mr. Chair, so, um, I, I echo Dr. Orth's, you know, concern. And like I said, we talked about it today. We had a meeting about three or four years ago with VDOT and, um, county administrator at the time and, and several other people, a couple of residents who live back there. VDOT doesn't have a problem cleaning the ditches. That's, that's not the problem. It's the outfalls that they have an issue with. And they basically told us, we don't, you know, we don't have the funding to do outfalls. So maybe there is a possibility we can get some grants to do that. I don't think getting permissions from the adjacent property owners that are perpendicular to the roads to get permission to get the outfalls dug out. Um, remember, years ago, we used to do it with prison labor and that stopped because of some certain liabilities. So maybe we can find something to, to help, you know, help the folks get this drainage going. It's, it's going to flood, but the issue is getting it out of there.
And that's why I think, you know, the problem needs to be tackled in the correct way. And developing a plan maybe with VDOT and looking at the possibility of getting grants from NOAA for the resilience issues, I think could really be beneficial for the county. And again, it concerns me that when these waters get high, just getting a rescue squad vehicle on a normal high tide could be complicated. Because again, they, when that road gets covered, you sometimes can't see the edge and that edge gets very soft. So, yeah.
And that's, um, Flood Plane Management Committee's working on, because at one point, we put the signs down there that were duly removed by citizens. We're looking now to see if VDOT will partner with us to put, like, at every intersection, you have the little reflector pole. So we're looking to maybe put some of those reflector poles on the edges. So it doesn't show, you know, road may flood or numbers for how high the water is, but just so you know where the edge is, so you know where to be. Um, so that's something we're looking at doing, um, through the Flood Plane Command, uh, Flood Plane Management Committee with VDOT. Um, they've agreed to take a look at it and see what the feasibility is. Just anything we can do to help these people out. Unfortunately, some of your grants, most of them are tied up to where they're only going to be released if it's a natural disaster that causes that flooding. Meaning I need, I need, I need Isabel two point O to come in here and wash out one of those roads. And then the federal, the federal money truck shows up with FEMA and there's all this money available. That's, that's our, our big issue right now.
Yeah, I've, I've seen the corduroy road, which is in the severance going to the middle peninsula. Somebody's put little white poles along the edges of that road. So, you know, that may be, you know, something that could be done in the meantime, but, you know, let's, I don't want to drop the ball on this one. You know, we have a lot of spots in the county. We're not alone. There's, you know, Matthews and, you know, Cosin, you know, they're dealing with many of the same issues. I don't know how they're tackling it, but, you know, maybe trying to get together with some of those other counties just to see what they're thinking about, because they've got some pretty low line roads in Matthews. I know that. So anyway, I just wanted to let you know that that's what I've been thinking about for the last few weeks.
Any more items for matters presented by the board? All right, county administrator, your items?
Just one item. I'd like to remind the public about the Great Cleanup Day that'll be coming up on March twenty-second and twenty-third and hope that people will register as families, civic groups, neighborhoods, et cetera, and help clean up along our roads and get us ready for spring. Thank you. And they can contact the Clean Community Office for registration.
All right. All right, now we'll move to citizen comment period. If you'd like to speak, come up, state your name, magisterial district. And three minutes, please.
Good evening, board. Uh, it's my first time here, so I'm new to procedures and such. I've been in here in Gloucester for about ten years. Like to wish you all well. What brings me in to tonight?
What is, sir, what is your name?
My name, excuse me, is John Bombard. I'm into Ware County or District. What brings me in is, uh, I read, reading the paper, I noticed this talk about a, uh, bag tax. Don't, please don't. We are all strapped. With no doubts with everything that's going on, inflation, the world, everything else. It mentioned, uh, for litter, control and revenue for that. I think there's a whole lot of other avenues rather than taxing the situ, the citizens for that. Five cents doesn't sound like much, but when you go in and you get ten bags five, six times a month, again, we're all to the bone. And it's rough. I'm surprised we're not seeing more people here. Maybe I'm just an early bird. But that being said, uh, in the article, it talked that it was not a revenue-making thing, yet it was going to help fund different things. So it is a revenue-making, uh, proposal. That being said, uh, it's another tax. We all know the big thing that just happened with the reassessments of all our properties. A lot of controversies, and you guys worked real hard on a lot of it, and it's good. And I appreciate it. Still didn't help my property, went up over a hundred thousand dollars. And I'm sure you've heard it time and time again. But it's all adding up. And I myself was a retired veteran, twenty years in. I'm now at a fixed income. Last thing I need is something else to pay. And I'm sure I'm not the only one in the boat. So please, in the paper, it said you guys were considering it. And I would urge you, consider it and move on to something else.
Thank you, Mr. Bombard.
You're welcome. One second item that I had, and being as it was brought up, I am very curious about, and I believe it's the same thing. These reflective poles, how long have they been going in? Because I just noticed some down on TC Walker and then some that were, uh, down on the other side towards the bay. Is that something new or new requirement? Uh, where did it come from?
Dr. Orth?
I think you're referring to the signposts that have yellow strips?
Yes.
Down that are highly reflective?
Oh, yes.
They've gone, uh, only recently by VDOT. And I think I brought that up before, but they're putting them on major turns and intersections.
Curves.
Curves, yeah, in particular.
Okay. Is that something that we as taxpayers here in Gloucester are having or?
No.
So it's not coming out of our funds type of thing?
No.
Okay. That, that's all I had.
Thank you.
On there. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? All right. Next item is a request for approval of fiscal year twenty, uh, twenty twenty-five grant application submissions for school resource officers and security officers.
Thank you. So this is, um, that time of year, and we are asking the board for resolutions to allow us to proceed with, um, renewal applications for both the schools, SSO, the security officers, and the county's SRO officers. The SRO officers have funding for four years. FY twenty-five would be year three for us, and then we would have one more year. And then you are allowed to continue to apply. It's just you're not a priority, so, um, we'll see how things go in the future on that and see how state funding goes. Um, the SSO, the, um, the schools hired an additional two people to help with the temporary situation during construction. So they are applying for two additional, um, officers for that role, but those positions would go away. Uh, right now, uh, they're, they have five at the elementary, one at Peaslee and two at the high school. And so they would be renewing the applications for the ones they have as well as asking for two new additional.
Any questions from Mr. Steel?
Yes.
Dr. Orth?
Yeah, um, okay, so this morning, I had a very interesting conversation with one of our SSOs. And in talking to that person, it, uh, it made me realize, I'm just wondering how many of our citizens that are watching and video know the difference between SSO and SRO? So maybe, could, would you be willing to at least explain to those people that are watching on video or what the difference between SSO and SROs are?
Uh, uh, school security officers, there you are, that's your SROs. Your school security officers, they're a hired by the school system. And there you're just your security officers. The resource officers are your police officers. And at the high school, I know they have two police officers at the high school and I think one at each elementary school. And I'm not quite sure how many resource officers they have, uh, uh, security officers they have at each school. But I, I did have a question about that. You said that the two extra were hired at the high school. So if those resource, if those positions weren't, we didn't get the grant. Do they go away?
I did not look at that application because the schools submit that application. It would go away if they're not needed and that was their intent. They implied that they wouldn't be needed after the construction is complete. But I was thinking you were asking, can they apply for somebody who's already been hired? And that part, I didn't look at the criteria for that, but I'm assuming that they have read that and would know that they would qualify, even though the schools are paying for them right now.
Uh, I'm serious, because I asked that question, and Mr. Nikosia, I'm sure he'll agree with me. And you've probably listened at some of the school board meetings and noticed how the discipline, the disciplinary actions are at the school, how they've gone down. And I think it's, that has to do with those extra security officers that they've hired.
SSOs.
SSOs, yep. Everywhere you look now, you see security officers, and that makes a big difference. And so, I mean, whatever we could do, I would like us to do.
Want to take advantage of the grant.
Take advantage of the grants and do whatever we can do to keep those, uh, security officers at that school. At every school, I mean, if needed.
That's what this gentleman said, is that the SSOs are very visible. They move around the schools.
Everywhere.
And they are there to the cafeteria, they move around. They're not armed. The SROs are armed. Um, and they're there, I guess, to hope, that hopefully will let them know that there is someone there that could take care of a situation that gets out of control, that would require that. But they're also trying to enhance the visibility and the understanding of how important these people are in the community. But it was great conversation. I mean, it wouldn't hurt to have the SSOs that just sometimes come up and tell us what they do on a daily basis. I mean, this person said they're, you know, he's there, he's moving around all the time.
Yeah.
Throughout the school. He's one of, I think he's at the, um, one of the elementary schools. And he's busy, he said, all day long.
All day. And if anything major goes on, they also have the direct access to the, uh, resource officer. And they have, they can radio them and they, I don't know, and they have two at the high school. And I know they'll be right there when they need them.
So when we have the chairs and vice chairs meeting to discuss the, uh, joint session, that might be another topic that y'all like to see on the joint agenda, joint meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Put that there.
Is it resolution page thirty-seven?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Steel?
Dr. Orth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item on the agenda is update on the reassessment discussion of the modification to a three-year cycle. Mr. Thomas.
You've been, trust, this is working.
We trust nothing, Mr. Thomas. So far, it's been good.
Okay, let me see if I can move it. Oh, thank you. Good evening, through you, Mr. Hudson, to the board. Ms. Steel, Attorney Wellmott, thank you for the opportunity to appear before you this evening. A survey performed in twenty twenty-three and conducted across all fifty states in the District of Columbia found that sixty-nine percent of adults in the U.S. believe their property tax rates were unfair. And without going into the specifics of the report, I thought that in the context of this budget season and the consideration of a change in the reassessment frequency, it may be of interest to the board to see how unfair the property tax interest, property tax rate actually is here in Gloucester County, at least in comparison with our immediate neighbors. First, we should recognize that fairness is a relative term. And obviously, there are countless ways to measure fairness with regards to the property tax, most having to do with services rendered, which can be and usually is a very subjective measure. After all, one person's favorite service is another person's financial burden. But if we choose to drill down to the very basics, say, how much property taxes am I paying relative to my income? Then we have a basis upon which to compare Gloucester County to other taxing jurisdictions. Using data regarding the median household income for twenty twenty-two for various surrounding jurisdictions and assessment sale price ratios for each jurisdiction for twenty twenty-two as provided by the State Tax Department and the actual property tax rate for twenty twenty-two for those same jurisdictions. I was able to calculate the property taxes for a home that sold for three hundred and thirty-five thousand, which is very close to the average sale price for twenty twenty-two in Gloucester County. As revealed by this chart, the property tax as a percentage of the median household income fares very well here in the land of the life worth living. At two point two percent, Gloucester County taxpayers pay the second lowest percentage of property taxes relative to median household income in comparison with our neighboring jurisdictions. Further, as indicated by the blue line at the top of this graph, property taxes have hovered between two and a quarter and two and a half percent of the median household income for twenty years. It is also interesting to note that the real property tax as a percentage of the average assessment has remained at one half of one percent for almost thirty years, as indicated by the brown line at the bottom of the graph. And by these measures, I believe it is safe to say that historically, the property tax rate in Gloucester County of mild growth during twenty twenty-three continues, representing what also might be considered as a leveling off of home prices, say, from May of twenty-three through January twenty-four. See, in May, it was eighty-seven point two percent. Our ratios went down to in January twenty-four to eighty-six point four percent. So mild growth, but roughly, if you look at those figures, it's, uh, somewhat leveled off, most particularly in light of the prior three years. Uh, so to conclude, if a, judging from this information, it would appear that if the market were to continue in this fashion, say, for the next four to six months, and a reassessment were performed this year, effective for one-one-twenty-five, property assessments could be expected to increase between ten and fifteen percent. At present, this is all the information I have with regards to reassessment. So that's your reassessment update. Happy to entertain questions, or I can continue to the topic of code change. Seen none? In twenty twenty-two, the Code of Virginia, oops. Twenty, um, yes. Twenty twenty-two, the Code of Virginia was amended to permit reassessments to occur in the counties of Virginia every three years. This provision is, of course, subsequent to a majority vote of the county's Board of Supervisors. As a beginning frame of reference, please regard this slide, which identifies the reassessment cycles of surround, of jurisdictions surrounding Gloucester County. Now, where the York River disappeared to, I'm not sure. I downloaded this map from the internet and it just goes to show you, you can't trust everything you see on the internet. Urban jurisdictions here are represented by Newport News and Williamsburg in magenta and York County and James City County in green. And as you can see by the chart, the more urban the jurisdiction, the more frequent the reassessment cycle. Urban jurisdictions typically reassess every year or every other year. Suburban and rural jurisdictions are represented here in blue and brown by our immediate neighbors to the north and east and, for comparison, Isle of Wight County. The more suburban or rural the jurisdiction, the less frequent the reassessment cycle. Suburban and rural jurisdictions typically reassess every four to six years. The cycles seem logical and they generally seem to work. And as we begin to consider Gloucester County, which is roughly forty-five percent rural, fifty-five percent suburban, we appear to fit somewhere in the middle. And in that light, a reassessment cycle of, say, every three years would seem to make sense. This is, however, not the basis of my recommendation here this evening. I believe there are three good reasons to consider moving the frequency of the reassessment cycle to every three years in Gloucester County. Number one is sales database. As you know, reassessment is all about sales and sales ratios. Sales ratios determine the level of assessment, and the Code of Virginia requires that certain levels of assessment be maintained. This is why we do reassessment. And as I've made plain in the past, the larger the sales database, the better abled the assessor is to gauge the current market value upon which property assessments are based. The extremely active real estate market we experienced in the three years from twenty through twenty twenty-two is the exception, not the rule. In fact, the number of sales for single-family dwellings, the number of sales for single-family dwellings dropped thirty-five percent this year. Allowing for a greater span of time between reassessments in order to allow for additional sales from which to build the sales database, particularly for property types that exist in fewer numbers, such as commercial and industrial properties, waterfront homes, waterfront estates, and vacant properties of all time, all types, just makes sense. Reason number two. Gloucester County real estate itself, as previously noted, the jurisdictions that do reassessment every year or every other year are typically urban or suburban. They are comprised of multiple neighborhoods that are similar with respect to their housing stock. And so their sales database can, with proper locational adjustments, be applied across a broad range of properties. Gloucester County's housing stock and property types vary greatly with our creeks and rivers and the neighborhoods that surround them. And a great many variables can affect the market value. Great care and discernment must be employed by the local appraiser when attempting to locate comparable property sales and adjust appropriately to the subject property. Likewise, so must the county assessor employ that same care and discernment when developing pricing schedules and land values for the great variety of property types that exist in counties such as ours, with its mixture of suburban and rural neighborhoods, large waterfront estates, smaller waterfront communities, mobile home communities, agricultural farms, large forested tracts, all of which feature a great variety of housing stock. It only stands to reason that time becomes the friend or foe of the assessor trying to develop a quality assessment product that is fair, equitable, and defensive. A third reason that a three-year cycle may be better suited to Gloucester County centers around industry standards. During the February twenty-three presentation I made at the Board of Supervisors Retreat, I mentioned that the IAAO standards, that is, the International Association of Assessing Officers, standards allow for a twenty-month, excuse, twenty-four-month review of sales data to assist in determining assessments. Now, this is the most useful standard for rural districts, particularly during sluggish markets with fewer sales to work from. The reason why can be better appreciated. The reason why can be better appreciated when we consider the specific timeline of a reassessment project. In order to complete a reassessment project in time to provide a solid estimate of total valuable of all taxable property in the county to the county administrator and his or her budget team, assessment reviews should begin no later than July of that same year. Under the current reassessment cycle, if reviews begin in July and we track back 24 months, we are essentially bumping into sales that took place six months prior to the data value of the previous reassessment. Now, in and of itself, this is not necessarily a problem for the assessor more than it is simply a desire to reduce the potential for confusion by the general public when a portion of the sales data that is used as a part of the overall analysis for the current reassessment predates the data value for the prior reassessment. In a three-year cycle, the sales database would be initiated subsequent to the prior reassessment. In other words, we'd be starting with a clean slate. I hope you can appreciate this preference.
Mr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Thomas, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Yep.
So are you proposing that you're going to go back six months to the prior values of the assessment?
No.
You're not going to be double, it's sort of, it's not double counting, but double assessing.
Oh, no, 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 no.
You're not going to go back?
No, no, this is just for analyses purposes, not for application of the final values.
Got it, thank you.
Sure. And finally, a fourth, though less persuasive reason to move to a three-year cycle is that the general excitement that typically accompanies a reassessment project would be delayed for a year. Now, I would be, I would be remiss if I did not mention that that argument can also go the other way, in that the more frequent a reassessment, the lesser the potential for sticker shock. But that argument only works in particularly good markets, which I have already noted is the exception, not the rule. Further, it is my experience that the educated taxpayer understands that the goal of reassessment is the equalization of the property tax base. As county assessor, it is my recommendation that Gloucester County proceed with a change in the county code to move and move to a real property assessment cycle of three years. This concludes my presentation, and I look forward to answering your questions.
Mr. Thomas, I think you left off number six.
Number six.
On your topics of why we should move to three years. Now, as we requested with the General Assembly to get three years in the code.
Your insight may ask for the three.
I see.
Gloucester County had to ask the General Assembly to approve three years.
Yes, yes.
So that's another reason why to go to it.
Another reason, absolutely.
That's number six.
Number, yes.
Any more questions from Mr. Thomas, comments? Dr. Or.
No question, but just a comment or a thank you. I had asked you, when you sent us a lot of the data, to have summary graphs and tables, and you responded immediately. I appreciate it. And I mentioned to Ms. Steel that perhaps those summary data could be put into a file that is accessible to the citizens on our website that could see the summary data. You know, this assessment is something that affects every single person in this community. And to have that type of data and our tax rates in a separate folder that could be accessible, I think would be very beneficial and very transparent, the way we do our assessment. But those summary graphics were phenomenal. I do thank you again for timely response.
And if it's your will, I could also put the, the summary of my presentation in there as well. Okay. Thank you. Oh, sorry.
Mr. Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Thomas, I just also wanted to echo Dr. Or's statements, and I really appreciate your presentation and the effort you put into it, and you're always very responsive when we need new data. And I think it's, it is, it would be very helpful to put some of this comparison data out before the public, because, of course, we want to be fiscally conservative and we want to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars, but I think it's easy to forget where we stand in relationship to other counties, and that would really be beneficial for our citizens to see how hard we are working to, to be good stewards of their money and, and provide a reasonable tax rate. So thank you again for your excellent work.
Thank you. We'll see you two weeks.
Okay. I'll make sure to include the.
Next item on the agenda is a mid-year financial report for a period ending December 31st, 2023. Ms. Callaway.
Good evening. I'll have some handout. I touch that to everybody else.
Thank you.
Good evening. So this evening, I will be presenting the mid-year financial update for fiscal year 2024. Apologize for not getting my slides into the board packet, but the financial statements were included. They begin on page 40 of your board packet. So that is a very comprehensive overview, every single line item, every fund. I'm not going to go into all that tonight. So my focus this evening is going to be to give you high-level explanations and mainly focus on revenues to show you where we're going and prepare you with useful information for the upcoming budget. All right. Beginning with a high level, this is the wrong presentation. Does that say mid-year? It does. I wonder if I sent you the wrong one. That could make things very interesting. I know exactly what I did. Our IT department was working on our share files yesterday, so I had everything on my, on my downloads, but this one, the PDF should be accurate. Can you flip to the next page? Okay. That looks, sorry about that, Trish. Well, that was, sorry for the diversion. So to date, we have collected approximately, well, 46% of our general fund revenue, so we're about halfway through the year. General fund expenditure is at 50%. So this ratio is pretty common that we see mid-year through, midway through our fiscal year, so not anything to be concerned about. I've provided the comparison ratios towards the bottom for fiscal year '23 and '22. So more expenditures than revenue means we are dipping into that fund balance. You can see that circled number in the middle, the 6.58 million, and I do have some more detail towards the end of my presentation on fund balance. So again, not something to be concerned about. This is very typical for what we see midway through the year, and I'll highlight any other places where we're seeing trending up or trending down. So this is the update of our largest general fund, general fund revenues, and what I've done is provided in the second column the percentage of the general fund budget that is that particular revenue source. So for instance, current real estate taxes, 42% of our general fund budget this year. So what I was looking for when I analyzed these revenues is how much have we received year-to-date, and then compared that to what is our average that we are receiving this, at this point in each year? So I went back and looked several years, in some cases, five, some cases even 10 years, and this, the 49% that you see on the far right with the red arrow is an approximate amount that we receive annually of our real estate taxes at this point every year. So that red indicates we are seeing that come in a little bit lower, and then the green arrow from the bottom up showing all of those are actually trending on the positive.
This is mid-year of last year.
This fiscal year, so at, through July 1 through December 31st. Okay.
Yeah, this fiscal.
All right. So real estate tax, again, our largest revenue source, so, and I just mentioned that we are seeing that trend a little bit on the lower side. We each year analyze the, the assessment, we look at the land books, we try to come up with our budget for real estate. And as you know, fiscal year '24 was a little bit of a challenging year to estimate that revenue budget. We had a reassessment going on, working, we were attempted to equalize the tax rate. We also had a very unusual market that we were dealing with. So going back to fiscal year '23, we actually overestimated our real estate tax revenue as well. So in fiscal year '23, as you can see with that, the blue shaded box in the center, we estimated 33 million, we came in at 32,791. This year, we estimated even higher at 33.9 million, and I am not seeing that we will meet that target. So a good comparison that I like to show is that budget number. We, we estimated our budget would be increase about 3%. Halfway through the year, we're seeing a 1% increase. So I'm not seeing, you know, there's a lot of revenue still to be had in the last half of this year. Generally, about 51% of our revenue comes in in the second half of the year. So not a big call for concern here, but just something I want to bring to your attention because it is a consideration we have taken for the fiscal year '25 estimates as well. So some reasons for this potential shortfall. First of all, that the first thing I could see was the relief for veterans has increased significantly over the past several years, actually 300% since 2016. The relief for elderly and veterans in total was just under 900,000 for 2023. So that was much higher than we expected, and that's revenue that we're not going to collect. Then, as I mentioned earlier, the reassessment year, we equalized the tax rate, and it appears that we also had some construction estimates, new construction that would be coming onto the land book that perhaps did not, we, was less than we expected. So all of those things together, we potentially could be looking at slightly less real estate tax revenue this year. However, we do have a number of other revenue sources that are, we have some positive things to say about. So this is, I'm calling this what's trending, so these are other revenue sources that are not necessarily as large, but there are some big trends here that we can be looking at. Move on to the next one, yep. So these are a few for downward trends, and I discussed in my September update, the downward trends we were seeing with communication sales tax, public service corporation tax, and recordation tax. So those are the, the graphic, the, the green, the blue, and the red lines. And the communication sales tax, we're still, that's the green line on the left, we're still seeing that decline, and it's a decline 16% since its peak in 2020. That's tied to the cable and satellite and the use of those things that are not, has just declined. So we're just getting less revenue for those sources. Public service corporation is that blue line, and we have seen that decrease, and that those are assessments are done by the State Corporation Commission, and they were just coming in low every year. And it just so happens that in the last month, we received a $220,000 additional assessment. So we are, I am expecting, you can see that projected number, for that to bump back up for this fiscal year, but still to be determined if we're going to be able to depend on that moving forward, likely not. And I am projecting these numbers, but that is, it's very early on, I just thought it was important for you to see where I saw these numbers going for fiscal year '24. On the right-hand side, the recordation tax, the red line, that record, that tax has decreased annually based on the legislation change that happened in 2020. And, but you will notice there is another little increase there for fiscal year '24 projected. We did get a huge payment last month of $120,000 for a giant sale of a solar property. So that's something that we will see additional revenue, probably above budget for fiscal year '24, but obviously, we're not going to be counting on that in future years. Oh, deeds of conveyance, that's one last one. It's the small little gold line at the bottom, not much revenue, it's very small, but it's something that we're watching each month because it does seem to be reactive to the economic activity that's happening. So you can see the, the bump in fiscal year '21, '22, coming back down in '23. That's directly related to the number of transfers of properties that happened in those fiscal years. Thanks, Trish. So continued positive trend with our lodging tax. This is one that I've started to, we monitor monthly, so I made the blue, there's a real light blue line that's bold, that is fiscal year '24 to date. And as you can see, we're trending positively with that one, and you can also see from this graph that it's a very seasonal tax. We receive a lot of this, much higher deposits in the summer months, and then a little bit of an increase there in the holidays, November and December, but otherwise, it's a very seasonal tax. So that's why we're starting to track this on a monthly basis instead of doing something like where we would average it out. On the right-hand side, you can see where we have just seen really large increases in this tax, and it was initially one we were concerned we were going to start losing, but instead, it has increased 118% since fiscal year 2020. And also interesting is that the monthly sales of tourist items have increased 33% over the first six months of '23. So we're seeing great numbers in that as well, and I spoke with the interim director of Parks, Rec, and Tourism earlier today, and he said, we're just seeing really great numbers at the visitor's center. So that's excellent.
Mr. Vazani.
So, Ms. Callaway, so the, the taxes, like the hotel taxes and, and the sales taxes are gone, they go to Virginia, somebody works a black box, and we get a check from Virginia that's supposedly our fair share of taxes coming into us. Do we know exactly how that works? Have we ever, have we ever done an audit of how they allocate those monies back to Gloucester County to ensure that we get our fair share of these, these sales taxes in our county?
Lodging tax, I believe, is actually remitted directly to the commissioner.
Directly to the commissioner.
So the commissioner is aware of exactly which businesses are submitting their lodging tax, and she is well aware of the ones that are not.
What about sales taxes and overall sales taxes?
Sales.
How do we know we're getting our fair share? Is, is the Virginia allocating money somewhere else and just giving us the remainder for all localities? Are we, how do we know? What's the method? Is there a formula they use of some kind that we look at?
Honestly, I'm.
Do we know how they do that?
I'm not aware of a specific, but I, I believe that we are getting the percentage that we are supposed to be getting, and trends according to the other trends that I see with the state. But no, I have not done an audit to know exactly which businesses are remitting that sales tax to the state of Virginia.
So, but if, if, one more question. So if, if, let's theoretically say we give, we, we raised a million dollars in taxes and that goes to the state, and we get a percent, let's say, what, what percentage do we get back here?
Should be one.
Two points?
Well, it depends, yeah, there's a, it gets split between different funds, but.
200 base, two, two points or 2%. So how do we know that that $200,000 is real? How do we know that? Do we, I mean, I'm not blaming, I'm not accusing you or anything, I'm just wondering how the state calculates this so that we, we know that we're being treated fairly. They never explain that to anybody.
Carol may have something to add.
The commissioner of revenue is tracking sales of what is reported locally for the business income, but the state is also audited. So, you know, just like we get a little bit hyper, like, oh, here come the auditors, make sure everything's right, well, the state's audited too. So if, if they were making mistakes, then the auditors should be catching that. And I think, again, based upon what we see trending, if something was really, like, when we started the sales tax for the schools.
Yes.
That was one of the things we immediately noticed, that the sales tax for schools was different than the 1% we were getting, and Maria followed up on it, they explained there was a problem in multiple localities, and we ended up getting, and it was a delay, and we caught back up. So I, I mean, I think those, it's people doing the job that they're supposed to and legally doing is the, the main thing.
So, but are we certain, like the sales tax, we, we found a little glitch, as you're saying, right?
Well, that's, we can see it.
Are we sure that the glitch doesn't exist on the other sales taxes?
I think we're as sure as we will ever be, and I don't know of any locality who's gone to the state and said, we want to audit. I mean, we've had more problems that are, are concerns about our communications tax, not the sales tax, because that's more of a mystery, but we do know. But we do know that's trending down. A whole lot of people don't use the same services they used to. I didn't get a chance to see, but I know there was a bill introduced to tax the internet streaming the same way that the cable was done, and I'm guessing it failed.
Yeah.
But that was one of the attempts to get communications tax back up. But we watch these trends.
So sales taxes are reported directly by the businesses here in Gloucester County, directly to the state?
Yes.
Do we get a report as to how many, as far as taxes coming?
I think it's proprietary. We don't.
We don't get that information?
We can't see their data.
Okay.
It's confidential, yeah, the business information is confidential.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Well, indirectly, we could get it because of their BEPOL tax.
But that's all, that information is also confidential, perhaps our commissioner.
Commissioner of Revenue could do some calculations, I would think.
Perhaps.
Well, not necessarily, because there's so many different taxes.
Yeah, I don't think the two would align exactly, but it's.
Okay.
I've just always been curious.
All right. Thank you.
More the trust but verify kind of thing?
Yeah. I understand. Interest revenue, we, I also brought this slide, now it is updated, but I showed you this in September because our interest rates are just, have continued to increase. And we have received much more revenue than we anticipated even at this point in the fiscal year. So we budgeted $400,000, and we're already at $549,000 this year. And I updated the list of interest rates. So all of the other interest rates fiscal year 20 through 23 were as of June. Fiscal year 24, December rate, we are at 5.27%. So as you can see there by that gigantic green line on the right-hand side, we are expecting much more interest revenue than what we had budgeted this year.
Is that going to be baked into your budget?
So that, and what we will include in the budget is an estimate for those interest rates to decline 1% to 1.5%, which is based off of information from our treasurer.
Do we know if that interest is tied to the sales tax revenue that we've been getting? Because I don't think a lot of it is, it just.
This particular number is not. The sales tax interest is in the sales tax fund.
Okay, so they're two separate interests.
That is not included here, but I do have a number for that one as well.
Because I know we haven't been spending much yet on that.
Correct. We will next year.
Right.
Yes. So this is only the general fund interest income.
I just want to point out that this is kind of the good news, bad news.
Yes.
So we see that the real estate tax is probably not going to make budget. We don't anticipate it to, but thank goodness for things like this that will make up so that hopefully we, you know, still don't have to dip into any reserve, and we usually end up with the balance going to fund balance.
So moving forward, as I mentioned, this is going to be something that we're closely monitoring, but we are not expecting our rates throughout fiscal year 25 to be, remain at 5.27%, but we will take it while we can. So that's interest income, outperforming budget, and we'll move into a little bit of what Carol just mentioned. This is a slide from the September presentation as well. I wanted to just bring this back to refresh everybody's memory and of unassigned fund balance as of the end of fiscal year 23, carrying into 24, and what amount we have based on our policy for the fiscal year 25 budget. So as of June 30 of 23, the audit that we just completed, we had 29.4 million in unassigned fund balance. We've budgeted use of that fund balance in this current year budget in fiscal year 24. That's highlighted in that green box. And that leaves us with 24.1 million. Now, that is above our 16% policy, board policy. So that leaves us with about $2.6 million to work with for potential capital expenditures to be budgeted in fiscal year 25.
But our floor is 14%.
So our floor is 14%. And I had, the next slide actually goes into, I, this was a request, is a demonstrated fund balance chart to show how that fund balance fluctuates throughout the fiscal year. So as you saw in the very beginning of the presentation, we had used more fund balance than we had budgeted as of December. So this chart does a few things. This is fiscal year 23, so this is historical data. And this lists the red line as our fund balance policy for 20, fiscal year 23, the 14% floor, and then the 16% top limit is the green line. To take it back for a moment, what fund balance is. Fund balance is the difference between your revenues and your expenditures for a given period of time. So it is not your cash, it is similar to cash flow, but it is a very confusing concept. So what I did was I took for every single month, the difference in our revenues for that month and our expenditures, and that's what's charted with that blue line. So you can see where we began, and this is total fund balance because it would have taken me eons to pull out each little thing for each month. But this is total fund balance, and you can see where we started, up above our 16%, but our revenues come in in two giant sums, two months of the year. And that's when we bill, so generally, November, December, and then into June is where all of our main revenue comes in. So we're spending each month, and as we spend our monthly expenses that must happen, we do dip into that throughout the fiscal year. But the fund balance policy is designed to ensure that at the end of the fiscal year, our total year, we're within that board policy.
So what caused, what caused the two dips in the cookie jar there?
So in June, we receive 50% of our real estate tax revenue, but between August and, say, middle of November, we hardly receive any real estate tax revenue at all. So we're not, it's a monthly flow.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So.
And thank you, because I know, I asked that question for that graphic, and I really appreciate you bringing that. Thank you very much.
No, it was a great idea, and it made me think, and I did a whole bunch of these in different ways, but I think this one.
It's a very complicated topic, and I think the way you presented it makes sense.
Thank you. I appreciate that. It is, it's a, but it's designed to make me think, and that was very worth my while, that's for sure. So as you've heard this evening, we've talked about lots of revenue trends. Those are very difficult to dial in. We're doing our best. We're monitoring everything monthly, if not. I just sent a message to my budget analyst today and said, can you look at this every day? So there are things that we are on top of every single day because we want to see how are they coming in, and are we, what are we looking for for the next fiscal year? And that's becoming extremely important as we get ready to jump into the fiscal year 25 budget. All right. Can't remember which, I think I moved, yep. So this is one more thing that's just a tool that sometimes is helpful going into an upcoming budget. This is our debt service chart. So that Achilles and Boddy taught debt from 2003 was paid off in July of this year. So that was $599,000. And then I also added the new Gloucester High School bond that we just completed in November. So that's $31 million. We will not have any payments until fiscal year 25. And that first interest payment is 1.19, 119 million that will be due in August. And then we also just closed on our second communication system loan in December of 23, and that first payment will be due in January of fiscal, of 2025, so not till next fiscal year as well. And that's $467,000.
So, Mr. Chair, I'll keep.
Mr. Bazzani.
Okay. With respect to the sales, the school sales tax, the 1% sales tax.
Yes.
Are we still ahead of the curve?
So that is the next.
There's another slide.
That's the next slide.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. I just, actually, that's pretty much all I had to say about this slide. I just wanted that available for you as a tool.
That's all I got to say about that.
Yeah. All right. We're winding down here. School sales tax fund is the only other fund I wanted to highlight because I told you I would. To date, so that all fiscal years since inception, we've brought in 13.75 million in tax revenue, $357,000 in interest earnings, and we've spent 2.4 million on debt service for eligible projects. So to look forward to what are we going to see at the end of this year, are we still going to be ahead? We have been, this is our first year, we took our own estimates and said, this is what we think we're going to receive revenue-wise, and we set that budget ourselves away from the Davenport estimates that we had been using. Because Davenport, if you remember, had essentially done a static number because you can only estimate out so many years. So we set our fiscal year 24 budget at $5.98 million, and we are 40%, 42% through the year, so, because this is two months in arrears, so we've received five deposits, and that's 41% of our budget. So we're going to slide in, I'm expecting we are going to meet that target, but I'm not expecting we're going to overshoot it. And then I took the left graphic, and I just broke up the budget for five months of the fiscal year to show you that that blue line for '22 and '23, we already were exceeding what our budgetary expectations were at that point. '24, we're dipping a little bit, but I have hopes that we're going to meet that target for fiscal year '24.
Just to reiterate what Maria said about, Davenport did a flat rate. So they increased it once, and then they kept it light. There was going to be no additional income. So by doing ours, we're pushing it to what we think it's going to go, and making it means that overall, we're doing better.
Yes.
Than what Davenport said. So that additional funding that could happen near the end of the time or at the end of the time, or paying off early, you'll see that happen differently than what Davenport recommended.
Dr. Wirth. Yeah, I don't know if this made a difference, but remember, there was no sales tax holiday this year, and when they did, it was a lot later. Well, it was a lot later, but you know, people shop for all this kid stuff in the summer before school. So I'm not sure whether that would have made a big difference in our numbers, you know, they were.
I'm not sure either, but I remember having this discussion with Davenport. We didn't want the increases because we wanted it to give us the most stress that we could see.
Yes.
At the time we were doing it as well. So I, I'm like you, I'm very optimistic with what we're seeing with two months in arrears at this point.
And maybe what we need to do at least once a year is to show the Davenport original chart to where we are with pushing those revenues up.
Maybe I have to leave bar here somewhere.
That was actually in our September presentation. I started with a, looks like a thermometer, almost like a fundraising thermometer, but at mid-year, I don't want to project out for our whole year, so I didn't want to put that in there this, at this mid-year estimate, but that will certainly, it is, it's an excellent representation of where we thought we would be this many months into the, or years into the tax and where we've actually gone.
Wouldn't we get the next two months? Can you just send us a note?
Absolutely.
So we can see if we're at 49 or 51 or whatever percentage we're at, when we're actually at six months of collections versus the four months.
No problem. All right. So that is, oh, I do have a couple more slides, but I wanted to divert quickly to county administrator contingency before I conclude. In the board packet on page 83, there was an update on county administrator contingency. That was something that Carol had, Ms. Steele had said she would provide to the board, and more will be coming on that, I believe, but if there are any questions, we can answer those. Otherwise, I just wanted to point out that that is a part of your board packet. Otherwise, I will wrap it up. So, oh, so coming up next for when you'll see me again, you'll be seeing a lot of me because we have the budget coming up. That will be presented by our county administrator on, in March, and then the budgeted option is set for April. I will then do a third quarter update in May, and then we will be back into audit season where I will provide an unaudited financial update in September, and then we'll be into full-blown audit. And one last conclusion slide. So we're, in my opinion, we are looking good. Everything I'm seeing, there are some revenues, as Ms. Steele pointed out, that are trending down, but we have some others that are much exceeding our budget expectations. So I'm comfortable with where we are. Expenditures are falling within budget, and you have that status of the county administrator for contingency for any that we're not. We will continue to monitor these things and provide our next update soon.
Go ahead, Mr. Bazzani.
The county administrator contingency, if we could keep a close eye on that, because we do know where our unassigned fund balance is, I mean, we need to make sure we keep a decent enough cushion in that to get us through June 30th of this year. So don't hesitate to bring that up if we need to take action sooner than later.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Dr. Wirth.
Yeah, again, thank you for that very nice presentation. Maybe next time, a little speckle trap might be good.
Dr. Wirth, we don't have the kittens anymore. Leave the fish out of it.
No, I want to thank you for all, I want to thank you for all the numbers. I went through the packet, and I looked at that. There were a lot of numbers that were well over 100%, a lot of numbers well below, and I'm assuming that there are good reasons for every one of those crazy numbers. A lot of those were at 50%. There was one that caught my eye, though. Where in Gloucester do people get fines for parking?
You know, that caught my eye too, because I think we haven't had, and I didn't bring it up because it's $250, I think, but.
But it said, where do people get a fine for parking?
Probably handicap or the bench.
Yeah, and I haven't seen $250 in fine, in parking fees in a long time, so I almost called Mr. Walmart to say.
A lot more than that.
A lot more.
Does he?
If you enforce the law, you get a lot.
Well, and that, you know.
So does Mr. Walmart illegally park? Is that what you're saying?
Oh.
Every chance he gets.
And Walmart, I've seen you in a handicap spot. Anyway, taking your spot.
But thanks for all the numbers, and I'm assuming if there's anything crazy with all those well over 100 or well below, you know, you'd let us know.
So, yes, and I looked through, mid-year is a difficult time to present on individual things because there are so many of those little anomalies, but they're because we expect them. For instance, I'll throw out just a few of them. I don't want to keep you any longer, but $470,000 was the payment to the Health Department. It wasn't approved till last month at the board meeting, or the last board meeting, so we haven't paid them, and we're getting ready to pay three quarters at one time. So there are some anomalies like that that happen. Our civic organizations, we write those checks all at once. So they're 100%, except for one who didn't, hasn't, we're working with. So there are some things like that, that we have specific timing for them, and that's why you're not seeing the ins and outs quite yet, matching up to 50%. But that makes this much more, more difficult. If everything was on a regular monthly basis, it would be a lot more clear.
What fun is that? Do, have you talked with the Commissioner of Revenue or the Treasurer to get an idea if the elderly and veterans relief is going to be at 9, or is it going to exceed 900 for this coming year?
I've talked a lot with both of them in the last several days, and my understanding is that veterans is continuing to come in regularly because I don't, that's not a set time. Like, I believe the elderly, there's a specific timeframe that you can apply, and veterans is not that way. So my understanding from the Treasurer is that she has continued to receive abatements.
But, so she's going to expect it to be well over the 900?
Higher. I don't have an exact number of an estimate, but I do, my understanding, it is, it is increasing.
And so if they do it one year, do they have to do it subsequent years?
I don't know.
I'm not sure that either, but I know that in working through things, we're looking at a million next year is what we're sort of planning on.
Only an increase of 100,000?
Yes. Only a decrease of 100,000, but yes, an increase in the total, but less money of revenue. A million less in revenue. And that's both vets and elderly and disabled. I mean, that's all three.
Dr., I mean, Mr. Walmart, will you set a timer real quick? Go ahead, Dr. Wirth.
I thought you were talking about for me.
Well, no, I've met some good, a good friend at the gym who is one of those disabled veterans, and kind of tell me an interesting story that Virginia really is not as generous as many other states. And he said, one reason is, is that Virginia has probably more veterans living in Virginia than any place in the country, and that had they had the same benefits, the state would be bankrupt. Because he was giving me some examples of states that he's been living in that offer the same types of benefits, and what Virginia does is nothing compared to some other states. It's just that we have a lot of disabled veterans that settle in Virginia.
Interesting.
One minute.
God.
When Mr. Bazzani talks all the time, I never see Lina. This joke.
You'll see in a second.
I keep it in about three minutes.
But not cumulative. Any more questions from Ms. Callaway?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please ring the bell if there's an issue that we need to address.
I certainly will, thank you, thank you, Jim.
Next item is the discussion on county fees and charges.
Thank you, so I mentioned that I wanted to look into this, and the staff have been doing a great job of doing some benchmarking of other localities and providing me data on how many of each type of permits and fees are charged. And so, I'm looking for philosophical guidance for what to include or not include in the budget next year. There, in my review of the staff's information, and several of these permits that we haven't had anybody apply for, I don't see a reason to even consider raising them. But there are five fees that I think that the board might want to consider in the environmental planning, and I really didn't look at zoning because I think the zoning would be looked at when you look at your zoning ordinance. Like, if you change something, and then you may change the zoning ordinance, and also, it didn't seem to be one of the areas that was really lacking. And so, I'm going to, I'll get to those five in a moment, and also, the building permit, and that is something that we're doing differently than all the localities around us, which is costing us money. So, the total amount, I met with Mr. Bazani earlier, and just was kind of like, what are we talking about collecting? And I think all total, it's going to be right at 20,000 between building and planning zone, looking at the number of permits that we have had, and if you went with the increased fees. So, is it worth to do this, or is it not? And so, on the one hand of kind of weighing this out, we have not raised our fees for very many years. And while the people who are handling these permit requests, their salary is paid, there's not, you know, that's covered. These are never equal what their salaries, it's never going to be self-sustaining. But the inflationary costs that have happened over nearly three decades, the portion that the people are paying is a much smaller portion. The other thing is, I want to make sure that the board understands that this is not just all residents. For example, not to pick on any lawyers, but we do have a number of lawyers that require, that call us for a certification letter. So, our staff has to go through all, we charge nothing for this. And we're having to go through all this verification and give them the information that they're using with their client, and it's great that we do that service, but it's costing us. And the other, you know, so it's not necessarily a taxpayer who's paying that fee if we charge one. It could be the lawyer who may be turning around and charging the client too. And then, there are commercial developers that, so it's not just all homeowners. So.
For the record, I don't practice real estate law.
Good, good point.
But I would think that the lawyer is going to pass that cost on to the client as a cost of whatever legal matter they're handling, so I think it would be a reasonable cost.
And it, and so, it therefore may still be paid by the taxpayer because it would get. I can provide any information, like if you all decide, or you get, the guidance is, yes, we think you should pursue some of these, then I'll include more information in the budget. So, the five are land disturbance permits, which right now, we charge $45 for the permit and $5 per acre. The recommendation is to keep the $5, but just raise the fee up to $100, and that is per disturbed acreage.
That's 20 to 100.
45 to 100. And we did 110 of these last year. The WQIA is one of the ones that was talking about, that there, for the no exception waiver confirmation, and that right now is zero, and the suggestion is to raise it to 50. And we did 46 of those. We have a waiver, that's administrative waiver, going from 50 to 100, and I, and I mean, I definitely want you all to take note of these, and of course, if there is a acceptance that you would like to do, it'll be spelled out more. I mean, I just didn't want to, and we'll, I'll show you all the benchmarking at that time of any of these that you want to do. And then, we have a Chesapeake Bay exception that is 275 right now, and they'd like to go to $500. And part of the reason for that is it has to be advertised, so there's an expense there, and we did about 20. So, those are all in environmental, and then, the only one, so I did, again, zoning, there's nothing that's in a high enough category that I think it's worth doing. The zoning certification letter, there's no charge for that, they recommend it 100, but we've only done 31 since 2017. So, I, even if it takes five hours to do them in a year, it's not that much time. So, the one under planning, the boundary line adjustment slash vacation, it's $50, and we were suggesting maybe to go to 75, so it would be increasing by $25, and we did 20 of those. Now, the building permit is a different situation, that every other locality around us pays, charges the 2% that must go to the state in addition to their fee. And we absorb that 2%. The state requires the 2% because that is used for all of the training that they then go back out to all the building officials and building inspectors on the codes and the keeping up with all the different things that they have to do as a state to provide this information. So, they charge this 2% state levy. And also, our fee is $35 a permit, and just really quick as a benchmarking again, James City County, 5250, King and Queen, 40, King William, 100, Matthews, 40, Middlesex, 50, New Kent, 65, York County, 90, Isle of Wight, 85. So, you can see, we're really low comparatively.
The 2% goes on top of those?
Yes. Except for in Gloucester, right, yes.
I just wanted to make sure that wasn't inclusive of the 2%.
So, you could look at just doing the administrative part, and we don't cover the state's fee, and we charge that, and just do the 2% state levy on addition, and/or you could look at changing the permit fees. These are permits and trade fees, trade permits. So, again, I kind of am looking at, if you just did the 2%, you're looking at about $8,000. If you look at the other part, you're looking at about $12,000, so maybe $20,000 in total revenue to make these changes. So, we are, would like some guidance.
What is the 2% of?
Well, I use 2% of what we actually collect, so that's what I went by, but it's 2% of the bill, I assume, the way that Paul presented it. So, I just, it didn't matter what kind of permit people got, I just looked at the total amount and that we're budgeting.
So, if we did $5, it would be 2% of the 5, or if it was 100, it would be 2% of the 100?
That's the way I understand it, yes. Just like paying sales tax, but it's this tax.
So, you gentlemen knows, like, I sent an email out to everybody, and so, Ms. Steele and I had a discussion this afternoon before we walked in, and I feel, I feel okay with what she told me. We're talking about $20,000, but my, my issue was, are we raising the fees just to, you know, relieving stress in these departments, or we're, are we raising the fees to get additional revenue? So, that's a decision that we have to make. Is it a revenue thing, or is it, are we helping a stressed, stressed agency, stressed departments in our county?
Dr. Orth.
Do we have time to take those numbers and then maybe during the budget discussion, talk about it? Is that what?
Absolutely. What I would do is, it's such a small amount, but I can build it into the budget, and then if you all want to take it out, or I can do it as, this is what it would be, and it would relieve us 20,000 in the end, you know.
Dr. Orth.
Maybe just leave it out, and then see what would happen if we built it in.
Okay.
I would agree with you.
Yeah.
That's very helpful, thank you.
Although she did do an excellent explanation. To me, and also, I was alleviated my concern, so I'm okay.
Very appreciative of the efforts to improve every aspect of what we have going on in this county.
All right, well, I'll leave it at that then. Supervisor discussion. Don't even cut it off.
We do have a joint meeting with the school, and are we doing this thing at the high school at the first meeting in March?
We're going to meet at the high school.
High school, right.
Meet at the high school, and then go over to T.C. Walker.
That's two weeks away.
That was only 10 seconds.
Next month. It's the next month joint session.
That's like a month. I was getting ready to see when the fish are biting. Anything else, supervisor discussion? All right, only one other item on the agenda.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
All in favor? Meeting adjourned.